Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this June 6, 2023 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. Commissioner Casada will be joining us remotely. First, we would like a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Olivas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda, announcement of additions or changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we have one. So, item 3A, Fire and Rescue, Pueblo of Sandia, intergovernmental agreement, to be added to the agenda as item nine A is amended. And a vote is required on the change, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. So, do I move approval of the agenda as amended?
Madam Chair, I did have one additional, couple additional changes. I would like to request a couple of items to be removed from the consent agenda, item I and item Q.
Madam Chair, just for the record, those items will be moved to nine B and 10E.
Great. Thank you. Any other changes, Commissioners?
10E.
If not, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
And we will have to do a roll call vote, since we have one member virtually. Julianne, can you lead that?
I can defer to Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. I've been gone for a couple of weeks, so apologies.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You spent two weeks. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called. Thank you.
Thank you. So, item four, we have, County Manager, a count-on-us minute.
So, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, so, I'm really pleased to, whenever we do this, because it just highlights all the work, all the accomplishments, the dedication of our employees. So, by now, most of us know about catalytic converters. So, they've become very, very popular and as a theft item, and often causing consumers a chunk of change when they have to seek out a mechanic to get the part replaced. So, county vehicles, they're no exception. They've been targeted, but now we're seeing fewer catalytic converters being stolen. So, after one of our employees dreamed up a creative solution to this problem, it just, it took care of it. It took care of the issue, and we want it to highlight it, Madam Chair. So, let's take a look, and we'll see what Tia has for us to present. So, thank you, Tia.
Is there a play button at the bottom left of that one? Mm-hmm. And then, all the way to the left, you're going to see a play button. It's the arrow. Okay. Do you mind going to help her, please?
Apologize, few technical difficulties.
a number of catalytic converter thefts. Police say even during broad daylight, even when there are security cameras, thieves are brazen enough to steal these parts, because it's a quick way to get some cash.
Burnaleo County Fleet and Facilities Department was losing two or three catalytic converters per week, and we needed to find a way to make that stop happening.
With nearly 1,600 vehicles in their inventory, including cars, trucks, vans, and heavy machinery, county fleet was eager to find a solution.
This is the underside of one of our typical parks and recreational vehicles. This is the catalytic converter on this vehicle. The thieves generally come underneath, and they'll cut the pipe right here, right here, and be on their way to the recyclers in under a minute.
We had options like cages, plates, anything to limit access to the underside of the vehicle. It turns out Greg Livingston from Burnaleo County Parks and Recreation Open Space had an idea that the operations and maintenance department could implement immediately.
Road maintenance foreman Alan Serta and his crew are usually out fixing county roads.
Today, you find us over here at Animal Care, installing these milling berm's to help save the taxpayers' money. It's a group effort. What we're trying to do is keep the people from crawling underneath the vehicles and cutting those catalytic converters.
So, after implementing this berm solution, we've almost completely eliminated catalytic converter theft at those centers where we've installed them. It's also eliminated fuel theft, and fuel theft has been huge in the past, where thieves will come and poke a hole in the gas tank to steal the fuel. This solution eliminates that as well.
It's innovative ideas from employees like these, along with teamwork, that exemplify our motto, Burnaleo County, Count on Us.
It was worth the wait. Thank you for the wonderful count on us, and very innovative for our employees. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, we are on item five on the agenda, Public Comment and Communications. Public comment, you will have two minutes to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the Commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, do we have any public commenters, and how many, please?
Madam Chair, we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Joshua James Lawrence.
Commissioner Joshua James, former candidate for Burnaleo County Sheriff, current candidate for Governor of New Mexico. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What does that mean? When you pledge allegiance before every meeting, you're making a promise, an allegiance, to uphold constitutional, your constitutional oath and duty. Right? Okay. Well, every day, you operate under the color of law, meaning that you're violating the rights of the people. You are following statutes and codes that violate the rights of the people. The law of the land is our constitution. Your oath and your duty is to uphold that constitution. But it doesn't ever happen. You allow our sheriff to operate under the color of law. Albuquerque allows a police department to operate under the color of law, which was ruled down by our Supreme Court. We are not to operate under the color of law, because you're servants. The people are above you, and your duty is to protect their rights, their bill of rights. So, just want to let it be known, once again, that you're operating under the color of law. You're not upholding the election laws, and when you follow these election laws that are passed at legislature that violate our rights, you're breaking that oath. When you put up things like speed cameras and all the things that bring revenue to this county, you're violating the rights of the people. This happens on a daily basis. So, I highly recommend that you read the Constitution, Federalist Papers, trust law, corporate law, and any law that you can, because if you knew the law, I'd hope that you'd be operating constitutionally.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you, and God bless.
And that concludes public comment.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
If I could have a point of personal privilege. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I think by now, most of us up here and most in the public know that we received word this week that Representative Christine Trujillo, House District 25, which is actually my house district, where I grew up and continue to live, she's going to be resigning her seat in the legislature at the end of the month, here July 1st. And I wanted to just say what an honor it has been to serve with Representative Trujillo. Both, you know, before I was in elected office, I worked with her in my neighborhood on community projects, parks, roads, schools. And she's been a real champion in our legislature for our children, for underserved communities, for so many issues that don't have paid lobbyists and don't have strong standing constituencies. But she's always been someone that fought for her community, and fought for the marginalized, fought for those who had no one else to do so. And it's just been a great honor to serve with her in the few months that we've overlapped here. And she's just been such a fighter for our communities, and she will be sorely missed, certainly in my neighborhood, but I think across our state, for the impact that she's made on so many lives and continues to make. And with that being said, I just wanted to say that pursuant to our administrative resolution 2023-19, we did lay out a procedure in this board for how we will fill vacancies, legislative vacancies, going forward. This will obviously be the first test of that new system, though I wish we didn't have to test it on this seat. I wish her well in retirement. And so, I just wanted to say that it's my intention to submit a written request, I believe Commissioner Barboa has offered to sign that request, asking for the special meeting to be set at the discretion of the Chair in the month of August, in compliance with the timelines laid out in the resolution here. But I just wanted to, again, thank her for her service, and let the public know, and let the community know, the community that I serve and Commissioner Barboa serves, that is the process, and that's my intent to file that written request.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. And I too want to thank Representative Trujillo for her service.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Olivas, for bringing this forward. I just also have to add my best regards. Representative Trujillo has been such a stronghold for our communities over all the years that she's served. She stands with strength and such bravery in a place where, over the years, she's actually got to see a great progression because of the work of some of the legislators like her in how we serve our communities. So, just super thanks. I am excited to think of the future for this district, and she will never be able to be replaced, but I'm glad that I talked to her, and she said she's just ready. And so, she's been in service, and I thank her for that service and ready to move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you. Now, we move on to item six, Approval of the Minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Julianne.
My apologies for interrupting, but I do need to state for the record a correction on the published meeting minutes, and this is for the May 23 meeting regarding item 6B. It's going to be on page 26, line 23. Commissioner Barboa's vote was originally reflected as no, when it needed to be a yes, and that'll be on the minutes for this meeting, and it'll be corrected on the record for the May 23 meeting. And then, you can proceed with your vote.
Great. Thank you, Julianne. Appreciate that correction.
Thank you.
Okay. I move approval of May 23, 2023, as fixed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor with a roll call vote.
Madam Chair, Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. We move on to item seven, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, I just, I, sorry, I wanted to ask to also pull off item M from the consent agenda, rental assistance demonstration, and item N, the HUD limit incomes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. So, items 7M and 7N are both resolutions, so they will move to Section 9, Adoption of Resolution. So, they will be reflected as 9B and 9C.
Okay, with that change, Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for the remaining items on the agenda, 7E, M, N, and O?
Yes, ma'am. 7E will be AR 2023-62. 7O will be FR 2023-63. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, I move approval of the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor say yes by roll call vote.
Chairman Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
I just wanted to take a moment here and thank those individuals that are being appointed and reappointed to our boards and commissions for their volunteer service, and I just wanted to recognize those who have stood up and answered the calling to serve, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, Adoption of Ordinance Amendment to the County Code. Economic Development Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Madam Chair, and members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of an ordinance that authorizes the county commission to approve a non-project revenue bond or non-PRB application on behalf of the Caiaquarta Limited Partnership, LLLP. Essentially, what this is, is a brand-new 61-unit affordable housing unit on the Fourth and Fitzgerald area. We had the groundbreaking today, which is why we're a little sunburnt, but this will be a redevelopment in the area and the, through this process, which is a new process of participating with affordable housing projects for, that are doing 9% tax credit deals to provide tax exemption to them. And the tax exemption would be for a term of 35 years, and the affordability in the area will last much longer than that as well. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I wanted to start off, but just by thanking you for your good work. This has been a long time coming. I'm sorry I missed the groundbreaking this morning, but it's a very good example of partnerships, true partnerships in the community between the city and the county, and a lot of good staff work and the private sector coming forward. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Marcos?
Madam Chair.
That's it.
Not a question, but just good work. We need, we have a shortage of affordable housing. You're working very hard to help improve that situation, so thank you so much. I'm looking forward to this project being completed, and then seeing what else we can do.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if we didn't thank Chris Baca and Yes Housing. They have really stepped up for this community in a huge way, and if anyone's really familiar with the work of Chris Baca, I worked with him at YDI for many, many years. He transitioned from U Development Incorporated to Yes Housing, and, you know, he has already a lot of projects under his belt, not just in this community, but statewide. And, you know, he's an amazing human being, and he really does the work of the community, always has, and I want to congratulate him. And I know there's another project that's going to be going in my district really soon, so he doesn't stop here. He's got big plans for the future, so I'd also like to congratulate Yes Housing for the work that they do.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Commissioner Barboa.
I just want to also thank you, Chair, accolades for the work, so thankful, and also think remiss to not mention, Commissioner O'Malley worked a lot to get this project started there in her district and our chair's district, and as always, things are so much, and it's just beautiful to see the collaboration. I'm so excited for this property. Thank you to the folks here in the groundbreaking today.
Correct, and just add another comment. This was about close to 12 years in the making, and Michelle Ademblaker from White House Housing is here as well in support of the project, and would be remiss if I didn't thank my team as well for all the great work.
Great. Thank you, Marcos. Any other questions? If not, Madam Clerk, can you issue a resolution number? I'm sorry, ordinance?
An ordinance number?
Ordinance, yes.
It's ordinance 2023-13.
Thank you. Before we call for a vote, we will convene a public hearing. Did anyone sign up to speak?
Madam Chair, there are no sign-ups for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Julianne. And so, with that, it's been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Second. And a call for a vote?
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Very exciting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, my apologies to interrupt again. On the renumbering for the additional consent items, the two housing items are going to be reflected as 9C and 9D.
Thank you, Julianne. So, we move on to item 8B, Technical Services. Director Brian Lopez to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of commission. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Lopez. I'm the Technical Services Director. I also have Richard Meadows, my technical planning manager, and Julie Luna, one of our planners as well. Our team and I, we'd like to present our item for the adoption of amendments to Chapter 47, pro-rata ordinance. This item was originally brought before the commission on April 25 of this year, and we also advertised the item at that time, and we have been monitoring input on these changes, and as of this date, we have not received any comments. The Burnaleo County Pro-rata Ordinance was adopted in 2018 with the intent to provide a means of cost sharing required for road infrastructure projects for private development. Currently, all roads that are designated collectors or arterials are excluded from pro-rata, and this was done because collector and arterial roads, as defined in Chapter 46, impact fees are eligible to be included in the impact fees. However, yeah, and a developer cannot be charged impact fees and pro-rata. However, the impact fee capital improvement plan only applies to a small subset of roads, specifically identified in that plan, and so this amendment would open up the eligibility to all roads not included in the impact fee plan, and that would open up for additional collector and arterial, I cannot get that word out, arterial roads. In 2018, when the pro-rata chapter was developed, it was envisioned to apply to a small subdivision access roads, and this amendment would allow that mechanism for a cost share based on traffic impact analysis, or TIAs. And although the TIAs provide a proportionate share of trips on new infrastructure, such as signals, bridges, et cetera, there's no cost share mechanism. And so, this item would allow, it would help some of the smaller developers as they look to bring some of these projects in, and so for this item, we're requesting the motion to adopt the amendments to Chapter 47, pro-rata ordinance, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lopez?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
I'd make a motion to adopt the amendments.
Second.
Great. Madam Clerk, will you, let's see, please provide a number? I lost my spot here. An ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be an ordinance number, 2023-14.
Thank you. And before we call for a vote, we will convene a public hearing. Did anyone sign to, sign up to speak for this?
Madam Chair, there are no sign-ups for this item.
No sign-ups. Okay, so we will call for a vote, a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you all. I just wanted to add a note to thank you, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Just thank you all for your expertise. I know you spend so much time helping educate, but I just think we're so strong at the county because of your all's leadership and really being able to see this through. So just thank you. Thank you for teaching me more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So we move on to agenda item nine, adoption of resolutions. 9A, Fire and Rescue. Chief Perez to present.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. So before you this evening is a document that, or an agreement that we've been working on for quite some time with Sandia Pueblo. So tonight, I'm happy to have before you an agreement that will present Burnley County Fire and Rescue operating a fire department on behalf of the Pueblo of Sandia. This could not have been done without the leadership and trust that our county manager's placed in me to carry out this negotiation with Governor Paisano and the tribal council, also without the help and guidance of Ken Martinez and the support of the local IFF union for allowing us to make that move. So it's an exciting time for Burnley County, and this stands to bring in about $2 million, which will offset the cost of the 21 new positions that this will bring into Burnley County. And I stand for any questions.
I have a comment first. I just want to thank you, Chief Perez and Ken Martinez and Governor Paisano for this very important partnership. I think it is a really true, good for our community, good for the pueblo, good partnership. My quick question is the amount of money, you said it, does it cover all of those 21 positions that are?
Madam Chair, it'll be just shy of the full amount of those positions, and that was done purposely because the individuals that are housed at this station will also be utilized to help responses into Burnley County itself. So there was some offset, just in good faith, knowing that they wouldn't be all the time 100% on that, on that pueblo. They would respond if there was a fire in District 31, District 35, or 36. They would be part of the makeup for one of those incidents. So that's why there's not, it's not fully covering it, but it's relatively close.
Relatively close. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, just kind of, that was one of my questions, so I think we checked that box. Just one other question on that. So I noticed there's a 3% escalator in the contract. Is that, you anticipate that that will cover, obviously, we can't know what kind of future changes in benefits and raises and those kinds of things that we may offer to our employees out there, but you anticipate that that escalator is enough to cover potential future cost increases?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, so what we did with the budget group is we looked at what raises have been given kind of across the board in the county on a fairly regular basis, and it's right around 2% to 3%. So we felt that that 3% escalator would cover us in that aspect, understanding that there could be higher raises at different times, which hopefully that is the case. But this does kind of create a baseline for us to work off of. It's also similar language in the contract that we have with the Village of Los Ranchos and the Village of the Hadas, which are the boilerplates for the agreement that we now have in place with the Pueblo of Sandia.
So a higher raise than 3% would then, the county would absorb that, whatever that cost was?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, that's correct. And that's, that holds true for the other two agreements as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Madam County Manager.
Madam Chair, I just had a comment. I just, this is just a reflection of the amazing work that our Burnley County Fire Department does. So several months ago, Governor Paisano, who I have a lot of respect for, approached me, and his standards are very, very high. He had lots of high expectations, and he came and approached me about it. He had so much confidence in our fire department, and that meant a lot to me. And I basically handed the baton over to you and to Ken, and you all, you both handled it beautifully with the governor, his staff, and the council. So I just want to thank you all, and I just want to thank our fire department for being who they are. And they, as always, they make us shine, and they do a wonderful job for our citizens. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Question, comment and a question. I think Governor Paisano, just to reiterate what County Manager is saying, he doesn't have to do anything. I mean, they're sovereign. They, nobody tells them what to do. So the fact that he wanted to partner with the Burnley Fire Department, it's a testament to the fire department. And because we have been providing services for them forever. And so I think he's seen the quality of work, the safety that's provided. And I think that is testimony to this agreement. So congratulations on that. In terms of the budget, I do worry, so the, I don't know how 3% is enough of escalation annually, just to keep up with what our firefighters need, or, you know, the fire department needs. So just out of curiosity, the gap between what was provided by their commitment and what we're going to pay, what is, like, what, is there a percentage I can kind of get my feel for? Or like, does that cover one headcount or two headcount? Or can you put those numbers into more concrete terms?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so I can't put them exactly, but what I can tell you is when we first did the initial agreement with Pueblo of Sandia, the numbers that were utilized were the current pay rates for the firefighters at that time. Before you tonight will be ratification of a, of a union contract that has different percentages depending on particular ranks within the department. So that is where there's a difference. If it was back before negotiations, it would have been spot on and captured each of the salaries. But because we have gone through negotiations in the term with which we were negotiating this particular agreement with Sandia, there is a difference there. And 3%, there were raises, I believe, that were greater than 3%. So it will create some amount of an offset, which we knew that was going to come. And again, we kind of take that as we have done with the other, the other agreements, because we do utilize the equipment that those particular entities purchase. And we will utilize the staff that those particular entities fund. And that's kind of the balance and the wash that we see. And we've seen it hold true in the Village of Los Ranchos in particular, which we run about 1,000 calls for service there. And those are combined either in the village itself or in the general north valley. So there is a, it does come out in the wash. I couldn't give you exact percentages. I know I'm playing the role of Shirley Reagan tonight, but I don't have that wit about me to be able to pull that out. But I can definitely get that to you at a later date if you, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I would, please. Thank you. And the other, another benefit for this is that it's not only providing new service to the pueblo, but it also creates bandwidth then with the current coverage that, that our firefighters were already having to do. And they were, they were spreading themselves into the pueblo to take care of that area as well. So.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's exactly right. And we, we are closest response to the interstate corridor of I-25, which we do have some fairly horrific accidents right in front of the casino area there. That was coming from Station 31. And anytime you're traveling long distances like that, at code, at a higher level of speed, you do have some, some potential for danger to our firefighters. Anytime we can close that gap and be able to create a more rapid response for the individual and a less distance to travel for our responders, it's a win for both parties. And this is truly one of those in, in light of that particular corridor and the amount of accidents that are horrific in nature that we respond to in that area. So there's another win that isn't necessarily tied to Sandia Pueblo or Burnley County, but it's anyone who visits the City of Albuquerque, Burnley County, or the casino. So it's a win all the way around.
And when, when would this agreement be reevaluated?
So it has a five-year clause. What the intent for the Pueblo of Sandia right now, the tribal council will look at it, reevaluate it in five years. They do have a desire to stand up their own fire department. And I think that will highly depend on the level of service that they receive from us in this period of five years as to whether they go forward with trying to create their own fire department, or if they continue in the relationship with us. I would love to see that relationship with us continue to go forward, but that will remain to be seen five years from now.
Thank you.
Another quick question, Chief. So I'm reminded that there is a Rio Gran Bosque that's, that is in the pueblo properties. Do you have wildland fire expertise in this group as well?
Madam Chair, yes, we do. All of our firefighters are wildland certified. We're also, a side note to that, since you did bring up kind of the Bosque area, we will also be going through, the department will be going through cultural sensitivity training, now that we will be responding deeper into the pueblo than what we ever have. And actually, Governor Paisano will be leading that cultural sensitivity training himself. And that was something that both he and I agreed to very, very early on, because it, to me, it's the core of any agreement, to understand, you know, the differences for one another and be respectful of those. As I've kind of said before, trust is very, very difficult to gain, but very easy to lose. And we want to do everything that we possibly can to maintain that trust through the duration and continuation of this agreement, which I know my men and women in the field will definitely do that. And we have to do that on our end from the administrative side as well.
That's good to hear. Any other questions? So Madam Clerk, can you please issue a resolution number?
Yes, proudly. FR 2023-64.
And I move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Barboia. And a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair, Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could have just one more statement. I want to thank all of you tonight. It went through on consent agenda, but you all approved $1.6 million in ARPA funding in order to allow us to purchase two commercial cab engines from Pierce Manufacturing. We have George Assi, who's in the audience, from Pierce. This is a really big deal for us. We're struggling right now, as is the nation, with fleet. We're on a 30, about a 30-month wait period for five pieces of apparatus that we ordered just before COVID. And in order to maintain the safety for our, our members in the field, we need to make sure that they've got apparatus that is in good working condition. Jared and his group do a phenomenal job in keeping, keeping us on the streets, but that becomes challenging. And these two units, being able to get them in here by December is going to be a game changer for us in, in keeping, again, a good, solid, reliable fleet for our men and women that are out there proudly serving every day. So I want to thank you for that. Again, it kind of just slips through in the, in the consent, but it really is a big deal for, for myself, for my department, and IFF and others. So thank you for that.
Thank you for mentioning that, Chief.
Your bad.
And you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we move on to 9B, Technical Services. Safe Streets, Brian Lopez?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, hopefully I can get through this one without getting so tongue-tied like I did a while ago. I'm Brian Lopez. I'm the Technical Services Director. For this item, Richard and myself, we'd like to present for our Safe Streets for All grant agreement. Burnley County earlier this year received $6.3 million through the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant administered by FHWA to reduce or eliminate pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries along a two-mile segment of Coors Boulevard in Albuquerque's underserved South Valley. This stretch would extend from Gun Club to Blake, where Gun Club to Rio Bravo would be in the city, and then from the north side of Rio Bravo to Blake would, would be in the county. The $8 million implementation project would include design and construction, proven countermeasures such as sidewalks, bike lanes, lighting, a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and raised medians. Burnley County and the City of Albuquerque are each contributing $800,000 in local match to this project. And then the New Mexico Department of Transportation would be providing in-kind services. The county would be a lead agency on this project, and we will issue the, the contracts to design and construction of, of the improvements. Once we do get through design and we would get to construction, we would come back to BCC for approval, just due to the dollar amount of that construction contract. For this item, we are requesting that the commission authorize the county manager to execute the Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets and Roads for All grant agreement, that you approve the financial resolution in the amount of $7,100,000 for the purpose of accepting and budgeting the funds from the FHWA and the City of Albuquerque in support of designing construction on this project, and also authorize the county manager to execute professional services agreement for design for the project, and then authorize the county manager to execute and approve any future amendments or agreements for the project. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you. Before we-
Madam Chair.
Before we go to questions, excuse me, Commissioner, let's just get the, Madam Clerk, can you please identify a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. FR 2023-65.
Thank you. And Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for really listening to a community. I like the way that you use the word underserved, and we believe the same way, but my constituents in my district like to use the word neglected. Coors Boulevard has been the most dangerous road in the state of New Mexico for probably as long as I've been alive. And so I like to thank, you know, the staff. I'd like to thank the city for, and Councilor Peña for really pushing hard to make sure that we finally did something in this really, really dangerous part of Burnley County and parts of the city. This is something that they've been waiting for, for a long, long time. And, and I know that we have to navigate so many different, you know, government agencies from, you know, from the transportation to Mercoq to all these other agencies to even try to get any kind of funding for these roads. And, you know, we've been unsuccessful. And so the staff at Burnley County really stepped up and applied for this grant. And this is going to be a life-saving, game-changer for us. Coors Boulevard is, is really the, the in-between the South Valley and the Southwest Mesa. So both parts of my district will really benefit from, from this. So again, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. I can't wait to tell the community that, you know, we're going to move forward on this dangerous road.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Olivas, and then, oh, sorry, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to our staff. I asked this item be pulled from the consent agenda because I just think it's really exciting that, that we're going out there and bringing in large amounts of federal money to make good on, on our commitments as a commission and as a, as a county from, from our public works to our county manager to our commitment to safer streets for all through our commitment to, as the city has said, to Vision Zero, really reducing and eliminating pedestrian fatalities and all fatalities on our roads. And this is an important step in that direction to make sure that we are building and maintaining complete streets. And so I was just really excited when I saw this project and learned about this project from Brian and his staff. And so I just think this is excellent, to be leveraging our, our local money and making that go so much further. And it's also a great partnership with the City of Albuquerque because, you know, we know that we can't do these things alone. And of course, these, these roads, you know, traverse those boundaries, the political boundaries that we've set. And so just congratulations to the staff and the manager for getting such a great leadership team together that, that put this project together and put it into action.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Olivas, I wanted to thank you for taking it off of consent. But Richard Meadows, can you please stand up? Because this, I know you don't like this, but I just want to thank you. You applied for that grant, right? $7 million. So I just want to thank you for that. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Olivas.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Also, Commissioner Casada, I just want to point out that not only is it the deadliest road in New Mexico, but for pedestrian deaths, it's the deadliest in the nation. So, yeah, well done. This will save lives, and we need to do more of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I too want to thank you, staff. And this, this is truly a good partnership. The Coors Boulevard goes through probably three of our districts, yes, Casada, Benson, and myself. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Any other comments? So I move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Casada. And we need a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair, Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. We now move on to a new 9C, which is Housing Rental Assistance Demonstration, Fair Market Rental Payment Standards. Madam Clerk, can you give us a resolution?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-66.
Commissioner Barbo. Yes, thank you so much. And I thank you, Director Betty. So good to see you, Ms. Valdez, here. So glad you're with us.
Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to be here.
And I hope you had some rest and joy recently. I just want to, I just think in the conversation of the world today, and particularly in Bernalillo County, I just want, I always think of these times as big educational moments. And also to really highlight the work that the county is doing to support housing and families. So that's why I pulled these off. I fully support both these item agendas. I just wanted both education for the public and to show what we're, what we are doing and how it sort of, how it works. So if you could, right, explain a little bit to us about the RAD Fair Market Rent Payment Standards?
Okay. Chair Baca, commissioners, my name is Betty Valdez. I'm the Director of Housing. My first approval that I'm requesting is for the RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. And that is requesting approval of an increase for our 21 units. It is a rent increase. Those are published by HUD. I believe you received the attachment for those. And that is an annual, this is an administrative request. That is an annual request that we receive. This helps the subsidy that is provided for our program participants that are in these units. So that is that request. I don't know.
Well, just to ask, I know you explained the request, which again, I don't, I fully support the request. And I know this happens every year. But I think for me, important to note, right, we have these 21 units that looks like, you know, they serve folks with disabilities, multifamily units that we're in charge of. And this, when you say HUD determines those, what's our, I just want, yeah.
So, and I apologize. I should have given you more information. So these are county-owned and operated. We do have disabled families and individuals in these units. So they are operated by us. So they are subsidy that HUD provides. So it's 30% of these families and individuals' income that determines the rent. So it can be 100% subsidized, or if there's income outside of that subsidy that they can provide outside of that 30%, then they provide the difference. And that income is determined by HUD, that calculation. So I don't know what other information you'd like, Commissioner Barboa, but I'd be happy to provide it.
No, thank you. I just, that's what I think mostly to just, you know, name. Like I said, I think sometimes people don't know all the work the county does. I know before doing this, I didn't know we ran our own multifamily unit for disabled families.
So Chair Baca and commissioners, we have actually 75 county-owned multifamily units. This is only 21 of those units. And these were actually under a program that HUD had, which was capital funds. And it did not provide enough funding to cash flow these units. So I applied for and moved them to the RAD program so that it's more like a Section 8 voucher program, but it stays with the units so that it cash flows the program, and they're not running in a negative cash flow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to this point too, I think that, again, for also my own education, when you're saying, and I see the county manager's notes on here too, that right, the HUD, the federal funds were decreased. And so you made the move to this RAD program that allows us to keep using that funding for housing?
Correct. And this does state that the Section 8 voucher, Commissioner Baca and, Commissioner Baca, I'm sorry. Chair Baca, I'm, I apologize. I've been on vacation for a few days myself. Chair Baca and commissioners, these vouchers do stay with these units. So if these, because these are for disabled, these 75 units and seniors, they do oftentimes go to assisted living or relatives. They do stay with these units. We do have a waiting list. We pull from that. And those individuals do come into subsidized housing, so they do not take it with them. They do stay with these units, and we replace those individuals with those off of our waiting list. So.
Thank you. Such a great service.
So thank you. And I don't know if, I don't know if there's any other questions. Yeah. Oh, I move approval for this ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded. No other, no other comments. I'll call for a vote, please.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Thank you, Betty. And the next one, item 9D, Housing Income Limits for Bernalillo County Housing Department. Commissioner Barbo.
Again, mostly for education, as the world is figuring out how we increase affordable housing. I just wanted to highlight that, right, the changes being made here, both that, you know, interact between our governments, federal and local governments. So the income limits for the housing, can you please explain this item?
Sure. Chair Baca, commissioners, this is a request for income increases. So each year, again, HUD publishes income, annual income allowances for our program participants. It is a median income. They have published this year's median income, and it's 80% of median income. We do not use that income. That is the high end of the median income for our program. We use 30% to allow participants into our program. We use low and very low income for our program participants. That is what we establish for our vouchers and our program participants. So that is the request that I'm asking you to approve today as our new income limits for our next calendar year, which is a physical year for the county. HUD works on a calendar year. So my request is approval of the new HUD income limits, I believe, which you have the attachment. So that's my request. They did increase it by about $80. So it's not a big increase, but it still helps more participants into the program. So I stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
I don't have the attachment in front of me.
Oh, you do not.
What, what is the median income?
The median income for one family, and this is at 50% that HUD published, is $28,000, a family of one. So we use 30%.
30% of $28,000? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and just to that point, right, when you say, because I would love if we could raise that, but you, when you're prioritizing this, you're picking the very, the low income and the very low income because it's how far our dollars can stretch, as far as our budget. Is that correct?
So, Madam Chair, commissioners, we first are required by HUD regulation to pull 75% of our program participants, low and very low program participants. When we've met that obligation, then we go to 50%. And so we generally have so many on the waiting list that we never meet that obligation. Right now, we're getting ready to close our waiting list because we have 3,000 people on our waiting list.
And, sorry, Madam Chair. So that, like, when you, so that piece, is that, oh, is that a standard that's across all states? I just like, that, like, is it sort of, would Texas have the same standards that we do around starting with that? And then I guess I just wonder when we have states that have different incomes and.
Chair Baca, commissioners, so HUD publishes income by counties. So our income is published by Bernalillo County. Closing the waiting list is determined, HUD gives us regulation, and I'll quote the regulation, "When you can't give hope to the program participant." So what's hope? When you're waiting five years, 10 years, what's hope on the waiting list? Right now, you know, our waiting list might take you three to five years to get on our program. Is that hopeless? For some people, yes. For others, no. You know, they'll wait as long as they have to. So we do pulls as often as we can. As those fall off, we pull and put them on. So we're constantly monitoring. I explain to people, it's like the stock market. You know, we watch it every day. We're monitoring. We take off, we pull on, we buy stock, we sell. We buy stock, we sell. Only it's, you know, vouchers. You know, we're pulling, we're putting on, we're pulling, we're putting on. As people drop off, we put on new vouchers.
I said before here that I was recipient of housing voucher, Section 8 housing voucher. I was on the waiting list for just a little bit, over two years. And it was hard in that time, but thankfully I had family that supported me here and there to piece it together while we waited for those two years. But the program was life-saving for me and my family. Then I got to still be in school, work part-time, and have what I needed, and then eventually, you know, make income that phased me out of the program. But I just want to recognize how important it is to our family. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Valdez. On that last point about the size of the waiting list, I guess, is, I think I know the answer here, but is the size of that waiting list because we don't have enough money to fund the 3,000 vouchers? Or is it because we don't have enough units to place 3,000 vouchers?
Chair Baca, commissioners, it's because we do not have the funding for those 3,000 vouchers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to move approval?
Yes, I'd like to move approval on this item.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you please give us a AR number?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-67.
And we'll call for a roll call vote.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll move on to item 10 on the agenda approvals, Communication Services. Tia Blan to present, renaming the South Valley Aquatic Center.
Madam Chair, commissioners, good evening. Tia Blan, Chair of the county's Internal Naming and Memorial Committee. Very briefly, we have a renaming proposal. Most of us know the, this particular aquatic center as the South Valley Pool. And a teacher at Adobe Acres Elementary School submitted to the committee a proposal to rename the South Valley Pool the Frank J. Gallegos Jr. South Valley Aquatic Center, after Mr. Frank Gallegos, who passed away in 2020. He apparently was a beloved volunteer of Adobe Acres Elementary. He also spearheaded a lot of the improvements and upgrades that were ultimately implemented at the South Valley Pool. The teacher's request for renaming, in her request, she said that Frank J. Gallegos was just an advocate for the children. They loved him, and he loved the children. And so that was her reasoning for wanting to name the South Valley Pool, South Valley Aquatic Center, after Frank J. Gallegos. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Blan. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am really asking for support of this, Mr. Frank J. Gallegos Jr. and senior. When I was first elected, they merged, made sure, and they sat me down and reminded me what my job was as a county commissioner. And had long conversations on who I represented, which was everybody. He is the one that reminded me that the day I took my oath, I was no longer a Democrat or a Republican, or a special interest group, or anybody. All I was, was somebody who was supposed to advocate and fight for all of the community. And depending, and to try to bring a community together. That's the kind of man he was. Those are the kinds of leaders and communities that we should celebrate. Somebody who has that same kind of mentality, that we're not here for a special interest group or any party, that once we took that oath, we're here to support and represent all people of our district. And I, for one, will never forget that conversation with him and his dad. And that reminded me of what my job was. And I hope that he looks down at me and knows that that's who I am, and that's who I was. And that's the job that I did. And I think that this community should remember a great man like that, with those types of morals and those types of really great concern for everybody, not just one side or the other. So I really hope that you could support me on this renaming of the Aquatic Center. And it is an aquatic center because it's no longer just a pool. It's a really, really great place for kids to go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Is that a motion for approval?
Yes, that is a motion for approval.
That's been moved and seconded. Any other comments or discussion? And we will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. Now we move on to item 10B, Human Resources. Some very exciting news for us. Director Bernadette Pettis to present.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and commissioners. Human Resources is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the Bernalillo County Deputy Sheriff's Association, or BCDSA, collective bargaining agreement. Negotiations between Bernalillo County and BCDSA commenced on March 21st, 2023, and we reached tentative agreement on May 3rd, 2023. The union ratified the contract with a majority of votes on or about May 12th, 2023. This contract is for a two-year period, expiring on June 30, 2025. Some of the highlighted changes are wages increased by 15.96% for deputy second class, 16.73% for deputy first class, 11.18% for sergeants, and 7.16% for lieutenants. For longevity, we added two additional tiers, so one on the front end and one on the back end. One is to include years three to four, and the other is 22 years through retirement. The addition of the new longevity milestones was added to support recruitment and retention efforts within BCSO, which are para-eligible. And with recent legislative changes in the para-retirement plan, in addition to the new tiers, will provide added incentive to stay in the workforce longer and accrue larger para-retirement benefits. And the wage increases also put Bernalillo County in a position to be competitive with APD and other counties within New Mexico. I would like to thank the county manager and the Bernalillo County negotiating team and BCDSA union negotiating team members for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. I did see Under Sheriff Williamson is here, and I think there's some members of BCDSA also that may want to add something. Anyone? Yeah.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to say while you were walking down that this is really important for us. We've heard and the role of the county commission is appropriation for this, and we know how important it is for recruitment and retention of our BCSO staff. It is a long day coming, and we really thank the negotiating team. That is your role. And thank you, county manager, for doing such an excellent job in this, and we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have anything prepared, but I think my role is pretty simple, just to thank everybody. And that list is very, very long, so I am positive that I will leave some people out, and I apologize about that. The first person that I'll thank is Sam Rodriguez. I think I've probably thrown him under the bus at least twice during this operation. I called him fairly last minute and said, hey, you want to run for my treasurer? And he said, oh, man, sure. And he ended up being probably the one that worked the hardest out of any of us to produce numbers that would show you facts. We tried to come at this from the very beginning from a fact standpoint. So thank you very much, Sam, for that. Santiago Roybal was also an integral part. Santiago Roybal was also instrumental in being able to get this done, so I appreciate that. If anybody worked harder than Sam, it was probably the county manager and Shirley Reagan at helping us understand the process and pointing us in the right directions, which eventually led to the county commissioners. And in speaking to all of you, everybody was very supportive and helped point us in the right direction and obviously helped provide funding that we thought would put us in a position to be competitive with anybody across the state, but particularly APD. You know, we lose a lot of people to them, and we have to do something to fix that. And I think that what the commissioners did was exactly what we were asking, and I really hope that that fixes that for us. One of the biggest pieces, I think, that we were missing last year, and a big part of that falls on my inexperience in coming into this. Want to thank them too. You know, I think that they maybe came in the form of pressure or just conversation. I think the sheriff and his staff definitely did a lot to get us to where we're at. The negotiating team was great, so thank you for not making it a fight. It was really good negotiations, and I think that the people that you can see behind me here really go to show you that we were very appreciative of what we got. So again, thank you, everybody, but particularly thank you, county manager, and thank you, Shirley Reagan. Thank you so much for your help. We really do appreciate it. Without them, we could not have done it. So, thank you, everyone. Did I miss anything, Sam?
No, sir.
Sorry about your loss.
That's okay.
Madam Chair Commissioners, I just want to say thank you to, first of all, the negotiating team, county manager, everybody that helped me. This was my first time going through the negotiations to be able to get to where we are today. And I want to say, if this is ratified, we will be the highest paid law enforcement agency in the state. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas, then Commissioner Benson, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank everybody that's been involved in this process, from our county administration to our union members and sheriff, everybody that's been involved in this. This is so critically important, and I want to commend everybody for coming at this with a data-driven approach. You know, one of the first things I was shown is a booklet just showing the differences between the agencies in the metro area, from, you know, Rio Rancho Police Department to Albuquerque Police Department, and where we fall on that range. And I think just bringing that perspective, talking about this in terms of numbers is incredibly important so that we were able to make informed decisions up here on the commission. And I know that that was a team effort between our county manager and sheriff's leadership and the leadership of the union. So I just, I think this puts us in a really good position. I think it shows that when we talked during our budget about our priorities, and of course we talked, number one, about public safety, behavioral health, quality of life, public safety is number one here. And clearly that shows in the fact that this agreement is on the verge of going before this commission for a vote. I enthusiastically, emphatically support this. This is so important that we support law enforcement and support the great but incredibly difficult work that you all do every single day. And the least that we can do here at the county commission is support that work by making sure that you're compensated. I'm not going to say fully for that because it is a very demanding job, and there's no way that we can fully quantify what that deserves. But certainly, I think this gets us closer. And so I just want to thank everybody involved, and I'm really pleased with this and hopeful about the future of not just the sheriff's department, but our community as a whole because we're seeing that under this sheriff's leadership and under the hard work of the men and women of your department, we're seeing our sheriff just act as a real partner for our entire community, not just unincorporated Bernalillo County, but helping our partners at APD and in the city of Albuquerque and across our community. So I'm really hopeful about this and hopeful about our future as a community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no amount that we can pay you that's a fair amount. And we just, we're grateful for everything you do. This amount is well-deserved, but again, it's not enough. You still make the sacrifice ultimately. But I'm very happy with the results. And again, thank you for the data. Seeing the, seeing the numbers of deputies that were retiring and moving, they're being cannibalized by other agencies around the state. And we don't do that at Bernalillo County, and we've always made it a point, but everyone else around us has been, and it's making our community less safe. And that's, it's got to be our top priority here in the commission. One of the few things that governments can do well is protect the population, and we can't do that without law enforcement. So, thank you for everything you're doing. These numbers will, I anticipate, reverse the trend of early retirees, recruitment, and I'm proud of the work you do. Also, there's the unincorporated parts of the county that you do serve, that that's the law enforcement that does show up. That's where my home is. A big portion of my district is unincorporated. So, thank you. Everybody who's here who showed up tonight, thank you for showing up. Please pass along to your entire department our gratitude.
Thank you. Madam?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, first of all, thank you, county manager, Barker. I'm Murgis Barker. And look, I want to just make a comment about the unions. I'm a proud union member. If it wasn't for unions, we wouldn't be able to negotiate these things. So I think we should really celebrate, this is a win for, and the importance of unions. As you all know, right now, I'm not working because the writers are on strike, and we just authorized a strike for the actors, for the Screen Actors Guild, you know, and I'm glad that you didn't have to go to that. I'm glad that nobody had to lose work and lose out on money and that you worked hard and that you came to an understanding and got a really good contract. So for all you union members, you stood strong. You should be proud. You should be proud of who you are, and you should be proud of what you've done for the rest of the department, standing strong. I applaud your standing, your standing for yourselves. And again, thank you, Bernalillo County, for listening to the unions and really stepping up to make sure that, you know, public safety is number one. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam County Manager, I wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the union. Thank you, Ryan and Sam, for coming and talking to us like right away. You were really patient. They, I know that, you know, we surpassed you, but you understood, and I know that it was difficult for all of you. Then you came back and you made it easy. You gave us numbers. You gave us time. We worked together. And that's the way that it always should be, and I'm really happy that this all worked out. I'm proud of the sheriff's department. I live in the county, and I can attest, you all are second to none. And I live in a very safe community because of you all, and we all do in Bernalillo County. So I want to thank you all and your family for your sacrifices. I'm very proud to be the county manager and to work with all of you. And I want to thank the commissioners for their immense support. It wasn't hard at all. In fact, you would even want to do even better if we didn't have the limited resources. So I know that you all fought very hard for them, and they all deserve it. So thank you all very, very much, and thank you to both our negotiating teams. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I'd like to move approval of the collective bargaining agreement with Bernalillo County Deputy Sheriff's Association, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Benson. Any further discussion? And we need a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair Barker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but could we get a quick picture? I promise we'll make it quick, not delay any further.
Quick pic. Thank you so much.
Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Okay. And also, human resources, we move on to collective bargaining agreement, Bernalillo County Court Deputies Association. Bernadette Perez?
Yes. Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Human Resources is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the Bernalillo County Court Deputies Association, or BCCDA, collective bargaining agreement. Negotiations between Bernalillo County and BCCDA commenced on April 14th, 2023, and reached tentative agreement on May 5th, 2023. The union ratified the contract with a majority of votes on May 12th, 2023, and it is a two-year contract expiring on June 30, 2025. Some highlighted changes are wages increased by 10.3% in addition to an increase in each step of their longevity. It's my understanding that BCCDA Union President Michael Tom is in attendance in the event he has anything to add. Otherwise, I stand for any questions.
Again, thank you very much to the negotiating team, to the union. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here to do this. It's a lot of work. County Commissioner Murgis Barker can tell you that I'm very new to this, and I have a lot to learn. And I'm sad to hear that from the sheriff that you all didn't know who we were for quite some time. And I'm here to make sure that you know who we are. I'm court security specialist, soon to be court security officers, thanks to the sheriff, who is stepping up tremendously. He told me that he got to speak with you all to let you know who we were. But we're a small branch of the sheriff's department. We make sure that as many of your deputies that you have in the field stay in the field so that we can take care of those positions and give them that benefit, give the county that benefit that they need so that we have a safer county, a safer society. And I want to thank all of you for allowing this to be a possibility. I have, very cool.
A lot of pressure.
My vice president, Gerald Harvey. We also have Ray Kotholduk, and one member who's not here, our treasurer, Rich Anglada. And these guys helped me to be able to do what I do, to keep a level head when I'm not satisfied. But I know that it's not just me, that this is a county that we're working to secure and take care of. Very much want to thank the command staff as well. I know Under Sheriff Aaron Williamson was there with us, and he's a supporter, and he's worked alongside of us, and we are very thankful. So, please, don't forget about us. I would be glad if I had an opportunity in the future to be able to sit down and talk with you all, let you know more about who we are, what we do, and how we can better serve because that's, we've had some issues in the past with our previous union. We're not a part of them. They are gone. I've made it very clear to the negotiating staff, and I know Bernadette Perez can attest to that, that we are not that union, and I'm sorry that we had issues in the past. So I thank you that you continue to work with us, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Small but mighty, thank you. Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to your union, and again, all the teamwork that it takes to bring these agreements together. And I want to commend Sheriff Allen. One of the first things he talked about to me after I was elected, and we were talking about public safety, it's not just about our sheriff's deputies, it's not just about our firefighters, it's also about our court security specialists, soon to be officers. It's about our corrections officers. There's so many pieces that go into this puzzle of keeping us all safe. And of course, we have to have safe courts, that that is a place of law and order, and that is a universal expectation, that that is a safe place, a place where everyone can go and be safe. And so the work that you do is incredibly important in and of itself, just keeping that place safe. But even more so when you take in the fact that if we don't have you all, we do have to pull deputies off of our streets and send them there to make sure that that's a safe place. And so the role that you play is just as important as any other public safety officer in our system. And I, that's at least how I feel, and I want to make that very clear. When Sheriff Allen explained what you did, that's part of public safety, and we have to treat that as such. And so that's why I'm so thrilled that this is coming forward, to make your salaries more competitive, to make your job a little bit easier to do, and it's just as important as all those others I mentioned. And so happy to support this and grateful for the work that you all do every day.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Barboia?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again. I love seeing the support and agree with everything that Commissioner Olivas said. Great to hear and learn about you, and open door, please come and let me know. Love to talk more. But yes, thank you. Thank you for your service and the service you do for our courts and our communities. Thank you.
Oh, yes. County Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know who you guys are. I know what you do. So I was working for the courts for 17 years, and I know that when people go in, when they go to court, a lot of them are not happy. And I recall several years ago, a stabbing that occurred. A lot of things occurred. A lot of really tough things occurred, and we had court security there to always protect us. I can tell you, the judges have the utmost respect for all of you. They feel protected, and they've all advocated for you. And every, I mean, every time I talk to them, it's just nothing but really good things. So I want to thank you all. I'm very proud of the work that you do, and I want to thank, you know, the both, again, both negotiating teams. You all did an excellent job, very professional. And it is different. It is different. And so thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Commissioners, for all your support because we can't do this without you all. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. So I move approval, the collective bargaining unit agreement between Bernalillo County and the court security specialist.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair Barker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
So-called.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you mind if they all?
Chair, come on up.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Ms. Perez, item D, Human Resources, collective bargaining agreement between the Albuquerque Area Firefighters Local 244 and Bernalillo County Chapter.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Human Resources is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the Albuquerque Area Firefighters, IAFF Local 244, collective bargaining agreement. Negotiations between Bernalillo County and IAFF Local 244 commenced on April 19th, 2023, and reached tentative agreement on May 9th, 2023, and the union ratified the contract with a majority of votes on May 22nd, 2023. This is a one-year contract expiring on June 30, 2024. Some highlighted changes are wages increased by 8% for firefighters. Some highlighted changes are wages increased by 8% for firefighters, 7% for apparatus and engineers and paramedic firefighters, 4% for lieutenants and captains, and 5% for battalion commanders. The wage increases put Burnaleo County in a position to be competitive with the Albuquerque Fire Department and other counties in New Mexico. On longevity, we changed longevity to anniversary date of most recent hire as a firefighter rather than July 1 of each year, which is how it used to work. I would like to thank the county manager, the Burnaleo County negotiating team, and IAFF Local 244 union negotiating team members for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. It's also my understanding that there is a representative here from IAFF Local 244 that may have more to add. Otherwise, I stand for any questions.
Again, as you come down, our role is to fund this so very important piece of the puzzle of our public safety, and we love our firefighters. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, really, we're just here to show our gratitude for the process. It's often very, very difficult to negotiate contracts on behalf of members that serve so selflessly in our community that, like you said earlier, Commissioner, there's no price you can put on it. So we understand it's difficult and we just want to thank everybody who was involved in the process, including HR, including Madam County Manager, including legal, including all of the Commissioners that kept an open-door policy with us to talk about the difficult things that needed to be talked about. And, you know, because of that, I think our members are very, very happy with this contract. So we very look forward to ratifying this contract. I have my vice president and I have a member of our negotiating team here that was representative of that process to speak. And, you know, I know with this team effort, you know, this team outlook that we shared with you all, we look forward to negotiating in the future and hopefully we can get, be the highest-paid fire department in the state one day too. So we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be up here. We asked for your approval for this. We got 85% of our membership to vote this in, which is a pretty high margin. I think it speaks to this year and the year before. We've seen historically high raises for the Burnaleo County Fire Department, and they're needed. And so as we move forward, we're not where we want to be, but we know you want more for us as well. And we know, and like many of the people who sit up here, our negotiating team and our union has worked hand-in-hand with administration, the Commissioners, and learning about the budgets, and they've been very transparent about that. And we know you work very hard to try to get as much out of that as you can. So in the in the following years, we're hoping that we can get to where we want to be with staffing and and the pay to be parity with AFR or, like President Tidman said, the best in the state. But again, we're very grateful for the process, the collective bargaining process and the exercise of our democracy and labor unions is so vital and so important. All of our union members, we have about 98% of our of our bargaining union in our union. When they take an oath, I think also as union members, they're participating in a process to represent the people in the community as well. And there's no separating what we do from us and them, right? So the pay that we get, the staffing that we get, all reflects the service we give to our community, and it's so vitally important. So we thank you for letting us be a part of that process and we look forward to the future years. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just, one more thank you because I forgot our fire chief and management. I just want to thank the fire chief for his advocacy because it's not just about the wages and benefits of our members, it's about service delivery to your constituents, to the citizens. And thank you for your consent decree because making apparatus more available to our department is going to be very important to the safety of not only the citizens but of our firefighters that are riding in those trucks. So we appreciate that and we appreciate the expansion of our services to the pueblo as well. So we really look forward to serving a larger population and continuing to improve on that service delivery that we look, we're so proud of in our department. So thanks again. Thanks, Chief.
Chief.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank the IFF for the ongoing relationship between management and and the union. I've always said that we are stronger when we're united and we're one voice, and I feel that we are there right now and we can continue to do amazing things. I would agree, we're not quite there yet on the salaries and we got more work to do. But every time we negotiate, we're getting one step closer. So I would encourage us to continue down that path to, again, one day be one of the highest-paid, if not the highest-paid department in the state of New Mexico because it's well-deserved and it's it's high time we do it. So thank you again to the union for allowing me to serve as the chief of this department and to you as the county commissioner to serve the residents of Burnaleo County.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to reiterate, there is no amount that we can pay you that's a fair amount. You put your lives at risk, you volunteer selflessly, and I mean those words equally for you as well. When there's a, a, an armed safety crisis, people typically think of, you know, the Sheriff's Department showing up or APD. But a lot of times, it's firefighters that are showing up first because it's something else that has been triggered and then the guns come out. And so you're putting your lives at risk just as as much, and you do so without without asking for attention. And thank you. Also, as a county resident, unincorporated resident, I've had to call on your services at 3:00 in the morning and you were there in less than five minutes. You're, yeah, you guys are amazing and I'm happy with these raises, but we need them higher. You are the ones that provide safety. And like I said earlier, in terms of the Sheriff's Department, it's not a whole lot that government can do, but we need to protect our citizens and you guys are a vital role in that. And so glad to be supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam County Manager, you had a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I too, again, live in the county. I have called on your services. Again, second to none, amazing response time for myself and my neighbors. And I want to thank the both negotiating teams. You all are are professional, direct, and it's just, it's just all around, just a really good group of people just trying to make a difference. And I don't real, I know that a lot of times people don't realize the trauma that a firefighter, a paramedic goes through. And I want to commit to you that we want to take care of you and we want to do better by all of you. Because what you go through is, I mean, a lot of people should never have to go through in their lifetime. So we understand that and we want to support you and I just thank you all. And I'm so glad that you have an excellent fire chief who supports you very much and an amazing commission who has supported you. So again, my hats off to both teams and thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas and then Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, reiterating that the spirit of teamwork here is just so critical. And again, the data-driven approach that I saw from everybody involved here, talking to Chief Perez, talking to the representatives of the union, this has all been about data. This has all been rooted in the numbers, you know? Why do we have these differences between departments that are doing the exact same thing? And and I'm, this isn't going out on a limb here. And I know Commissioner Casada will often claim that he has the most remote places in the county. I beg to differ. Off of South 14, better known as Highway 337 out in my district, there are areas out there where there is no cell service, there is very little radio service. You don't know what you're going into and backup may be a long ways away, if you can even get it. And yet we have members of your department every day that go out there and provide vital services to my constituents in the East Mountains, but also give services to anyone in the county. The spirit of service in this department is just incredible. And so I think I'm absolutely, obviously, in support of this agreement with the caveat that I think this is just our opening act here. We've, we've got to go further. We do need to get at minimum parity with APD. And as I look at some of these comparisons, or AFR, as I look at some of these comparisons, we still have a little ways to go. And we have to recognize that you all are doing the same job, or as I was describing out in my district, probably something even more. And so we've, we've got to recognize that as a commission and I know that we, we took a big step here. And again, big thank you to county manager and the fire chief for their help in this and supporting this and, of course, to the leadership of the union and, of course, your members. But I think we'll be back next year fighting for you again and making sure that we represent all of our public safety personnel and, of course, fire rescue is a big part of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you. I just want to extend a ditto to what everybody said, but also to President Tidman, Vice President, and all of you working so hard, of course, to our staff. And this is just so important. For families like mine, for most of our New Mexico communities, I would say that the firefighters are our symbol of hope and relief in a time of crisis, never ever of fear, right? We see a firefighter and it's like, help is on the way. And that's the way our communities felt. That's what I know as a single mom, I talk, that's the symbol of relief. Yes, go to them when you're, when you need the help. And I, you know, whether from, I remember my son having an asthma attack that I couldn't control and firefighters were the first. I mean, there's such a range of what you do from high-level intense crisis to saving someone who's desperate with their child to having an asthma attack. So I just, again, want to thank you. Thank you for being that symbol of hope I've learned from you as well. The model that our firefighters have where you are considering, we talked about the trauma that you have, that firefighters have access to support for that trauma that you witness on a daily basis and that that is accessible and incentivized, and I just really appreciate that. And folks here know my behavioral health message. I've talked to you many about it and I just feel like we're so aligned in how you all want to approach the issue that you are often the first to deal with in our community. So again, just thank you. I'm glad this has come to a resolution and you all, in my opinion, are a model department and deserve model wages. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I move approval of the collective bargaining unit agreement between Burnaleo County IAFF Local 244.
Second.
And it's been seconded by everyone. And we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for all three approvals.
Thank you for your work. We are at item E, 10E, Fleet and Facilities Management. Director Jared Divitt to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Jared Divitt, Director of Fleet and Facilities for Burnaleo County. I have for your approval the fiscal year 2024 recurring fleet vehicle purchases. Every year, we look at our fleet, we try and determine what's oldest and in the worst condition and try and get rid of it and replace it with something new. This is for your approval.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Divitt, thank you for presenting this item. And one, one thing in there that really caught my attention and I just wanted to get you to expand on, there is a piece in there that says that if, if we were able to replace a vehicle with an electric vehicle, that's part of this plan. Can you dive into that a little more?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's correct. We are moving towards electric vehicle purchases as much as we possibly can. The current market's a little difficult for that, the supply's not there. But we are going to try and focus our efforts on purchasing vehicles that will fit the need with electric vehicles. Some entities, that's not going to work. Parks and Rec utility trucks are not electric yet. Sheriff's Department, there's nothing suitable, it's pursuit-rated for the Sheriff's Department yet. And of course, fire apparatus is nothing electric there either. But we are moving to that realm wherever possible.
It's a good goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to say on the, on the sheriff's piece, they are testing those in New York City for some of their police pursuit. And I'm hearing all around the country, those are being tested, that might not work so well out in the East Mountains where you've got a lot of terrain to cover and, but I think hopefully Sheriff Allen and everybody's keeping an open mind about that and looking at the future. And I'm very grateful that, that you're thinking about the future, not just the future of technology and what's happening in the industry, but the future of the planet and, you know, climate change. And this is really, you know, all hands on deck and this is part of it. We have to be doing our part as a county through our purchasing power and through our decisions and the decisions we make, making sure that those are responsible decisions as I think this is because, you know, it's not going to be realistic for us to go out and purchase all of our vehicles in one fell swoop and electrify the whole fleet. But if we can do this one piece at a time, I think we're much better off for it and glad to see the effort and look forward to continuing to work with you on making sure that we're moving in that direction. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, Commissioner, I might add that we are also working on our infrastructure for charging as well. We'd want to put the cart before the horse and get a bunch of electric cars and not be able to charge them very quickly. I mean, they can all charge within 16 hours, you can get a full charge on a Level 1 regular wall plug outlet. But we are currently working with several entities to get funding to install charge stations that are a little quicker than that.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just thought of one more thing. And I just wanted to commend Director Divitt and Deputy County Manager Gilletta for also their, their work on sustainability initiatives. I got to meet with our new sustainability manager a couple of weeks ago along with the director and really excited about the direction that we're moving there and the fact that, you know, Burnaleo County is stepping up to a leadership role in the region on this. And this is just one part of that, so I'm excited to see where that goes and happy to support this.
Is that a motion to approve?
I make a motion for approval.
That's second. Any other comments? And we need a roll call vote, please.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you for your work. Last item, announcement of the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 20, 2023, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM in the Ken Sanchez Commission chambers. And if there is no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.[1788.82]